All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's production. You're watching GCTV's production of the Greenfield School Committee Meeting from June 13th, 2018. You can also catch the show online at gctv.org.
Hello, everyone, welcome. This is a meeting of the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee. It's our regular meeting. It is Wednesday, June 13th, 2018, and it is 6:34 PM. We are at the Greenfield High School Cafeteria at 21 Barr Avenue. If there are any members of the public that are recording this session, please let me know. Seeing no one, we are being recorded and broadcast live by GCTV. Thank you, GCTV. Can we have a roll call, please?
Committee Member Extrem.
Here.
Committee Member Hollins.
Here.
Committee Member Karen.
Here.
Committee Member Ward.
Here.
Mayor Martin. I show myself, Committee Member Nunez.
Here.
Chairperson Nunez, I show we have a quorum.
Thank you, Secretary Alexander. We have several minutes this evening, everyone. We've had many full committee meetings. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as written for 4:30 18, 5:07 18, 5:09 18, and 6:04 18?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I had a comment on June 4th. This was a special meeting?
Yes.
In the conference room. And on the first page, it mentions that I pointed out policies ADA, BA, BAA, and BBA. And I was just wondering if, at the end of this, of the minutes, we could say what they were, because they were pertinent to the discussion. ADA is school district mission and goals. BA was school committee strategic objectives.
So, Member Hollins, you'd like to add the titles of those particular policies at the end?
The titles because they were pertinent to the discussion, otherwise doesn't make sense.
Sure. Is there any opposition to that, to adding the titles of the policies at the end of this particular set of minutes?
None.
Okay. Any other comments on minutes? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of approving this set of minutes, 4:30 18, 5:07 18, 5:09 18, and 6:04 18, with the proposed change to 6:04 18? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I have one objection from Mayor Martin. Thank you. So, moving on to public comment, are there any members of the public that would like to comment today? Sure, I see a few. Your hand is first. You want to come up? And as a reminder, the public comment is three minutes. And Secretary Alexander will start the timer.
Hello? Okay. My name is Andrew Vernon, 17 Sunset Square. I am a parent of two children, one at Newton, a second at GMS. I was here before the committee on February 28th, along with March 12th, 2018, to discuss timely and effective communications regarding the weapon incident in February at GMS. Given that this is the final school committee meeting, I just wanted to close the loop on that communication. As of yet, I have yet to have communication regarding dialogue and commentary as to that topic. On the 12th, was 39 hours in advance of the demonstration being held on the 14th of March. From 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, I was unable to communicate with any administration members regarding that incident, the event, I should say, on March 14th. I just wanted to close the loop in hopes that we can continue, or that we can begin a dialogue now, two months after that event. The second topic I am here to discuss publicly is, again, regarding effective and timely communications. It has been brought to my attention by my daughter that policies in the middle school have changed. That was communicated to individuals at GMS this morning. To my knowledge, I have received no communication about the disciplinary policy changes that went into effect this week at Greenfield Middle School, which could potentially result in the expulsion of a given student. And so, please, I apologize, and correct me if I am out of line or incorrect as to if there was a communication along those lines. The only communication, to my knowledge, was dated Monday, the 11th, the beginning of this week, which I first saw yesterday, Tuesday, the 12th. As I understand, that policy was implemented earlier this week, but only communicated to students this morning at GMS. And so, would kindly ask the school committee members that we continue communication regarding effective and timely communication. One, regarding the event of March 14th, 2018, the event that happened that day with the school. And secondly, regarding any policy communications, that we be able to have a dialogue about them, and at the very least, a communication in advance before such a policy change is made and implemented. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Doug Selwyn, 38 Forest Avenue. Actually, got that memorized now.
(laughing).
I have two issues I want to talk to tonight. First is the question of whether to share an attorney between the school district and the city, which, there are at least rumors out that that's being considered. As we saw in the recent budget struggles, the interests of the schools are not entirely the same as the interests of the town. When the mayor recommended cutting the school budget proposal by $800,000, he was clearly not representing the best interests of the schools. He was trying to balance what he perceived to be the best interests of the town, which includes his schools, but is larger than that. Having a single attorney representing negotiations or any dealings between the school district and the town would place them in a compromised position, and it would be difficult to imagine that the schools would be fairly represented, as the attorney's primary allegiance would be to his or her employer, the town. I think we've already seen a conflict of interest and position with the mayor being part of the school committee, and this is not about Mayor Martin at all. It is about having any mayor on the school committee. Having the mayor being an automatic member of the school board puts him or her in a conflicted position. The mayor can't always advocate strongly for the schools, which seems to me one of the prime roles of the school committee, when he or she is balancing the school district needs against the other needs and requirements of the town. That's a structural problem, and we saw it play out over the past few months. I understand that the position of mayor on the school committee is not the question under consideration, but seeing the tensions and struggles of the past month over the budget illustrates the difficulties that would also face any attorney in that position, no matter how well-intentioned that person is. I appreciate that there's a cost associated with having an attorney representing the school district rather than sharing the attorney with the city, but it's a cost that, in my mind, is well worth it. We need a school committee that clearly places the best interests of the schools and children at the center of their focus. People working for the town can't do that because their responsibilities encompass a wider focus. My second issue, very briefly, has to do with the superintendent's contract. We're less than two weeks from the end of the school year, and her contract is still, to my understanding, not settled, which, to me, is inexcusable and harmful, both to her and to the district and community. The district is ending the school year and heading into its future with no clear sense of whether the superintendent will remain, or at least not a settled contract. Hiring is going on with the same question hanging over those decisions. It's no way to run a school district, and is unfortunate. I urge the school committee to offer Jordana a multi-year contract as soon as possible so she can continue the work she's been doing with her full attention and focus. She deserves it, and the district deserves it as well. Thank you.
My name is Paul Jablon. I live at 73A Fairview Street here in Greenfield. I would like to speak to the first issue that Doug Selwyn spoke to, the idea of having the same lawyer for the town and for the city and the school committee. Just to put an image in your mind, when there's a divorce, there's many issues between the parents and children that everybody has in common. However, I don't think too many people during a divorce would want both the parents to have the same lawyer. And I think it's the same way with the city. Sometimes things are in common, and sometimes issues are in conflict between the two. There's also, I've heard, some talk about that the lawyer that may be spoken about as the lawyer is, doesn't have a big firm, and we need a big firm lawyer. And that's not necessarily the case. My experience in school districts has been about 80% of the work that a lawyer works on in a school district is about special ed issues, not surprisingly. And that lawyer's already doing that. But even if it's another lawyer, the things that are in addition to special ed that come between the town are not that often. And therefore, since you're paying the town lawyer to do that work anyway, I think it would be better to pay someone who has solely the interests of the students, the schools, the school committee, to be doing that work. I did a quick survey by asking around the districts, and it was about 50 districts, and only two of those 50 districts, approximately, that's not an exact number, have the same lawyer for the school committee and for the town. I don't think it's a coincidence that 48 or so have a separate lawyer. So I, again, leave you with the concept of, would you, if you were having a divorce, want to have the same lawyer for both parents? I don't think so.
Good evening. Bob Cooley, 44 Overland Road. I don't have that memorized, I had to write it down.[849.82][849.82](laughing). And it's a privilege to speak to the school committee and try to support in a small way your important efforts. I agree with Paul and Doug regarding the school lawyer, and they said it better than I can. I'm just in that camp about independent and keeping important groups independently operating. I want, with the summer coming up, it seems there's a lot of great opportunities facing us, and one is to move past, I mean, I appreciate the public forum setting here. This is not a forum, of course. It's a public opinion expression. I would like to really encourage the school committee to develop a way for facilitated conversations in the community, to let people get together to talk, and so there can be not only just a brief set of words, but also dialogue, which means back and forth. There are any number of issues that, in which you can address that. I entered the retirement era for me in Greenfield in 2015 with a meeting, an open meeting, for families, parents, guardians, people who wanted to talk about the experience of students of color in the Greenfield schools. A remarkable conversation, and that's just one of many that can happen regarding identity, curriculum, school, climate, role of sports, leadership, all that can happen. And I would hope, that's a great opportunity to take advantage of a lot of the great interest out there for contributing to your work and getting people to, and I like to encourage, I would hope that people of different, you know, stances would come together to talk, and that we can work out how to help people talk and disagree effectively. Civics education, my, the constant with me, there are, there's legislation before the senate, the state senate, to really, in place civics education in every school, and there are examples of schools, that are school systems that are doing it. And it's been greatly affected, and I hope that this school committee can take the advantage to explore where that's happening, how it's happening, and this could be, again, a wonderful opportunity for us to do civics work. What if you took, and the civics, you know, you read the paper every day, and there's civics education. How does the national government deal with separation of powers, of judiciary, legislative, and administrative, for example? A great topic. During, when I was running for the school committee, I had conversations with people about athletes kneeling during the National Anthem, and got all kinds of responses, some with which I agreed, some with which I disagreed. But the cool thing was, good conversations, that we allowed ourselves to carry out. I'm also interested, and want you to use your time this summer, I hope to pursue ACE's testing, that is, adverse childhood experiences testing. It's trauma-informed education, it's happening nationally. There's good results in schools which are developing things in which there's less bullying in schools where this trauma-informed education happens. The assumption is that trauma happens for, we all experience trauma, and if we can get kids early in a trauma-informed thing, we can make that happen.
That's time, Bob.
Okay. Other things to say about the middle school principal and the curriculum director, another time, and thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to comment? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your comments today. We will move on to reports, and we'll start with our student representatives.
Good evening.
Hi, welcome.
All right, so to begin our report tonight, I'd like to talk about the class officers. They were elected last Friday, and I think also are going to be elected this Friday for grades nine, 10, 11, and the upcoming seniors as well, 12. And that was a rather exciting thing. There was a lot of campaigning going around. It was pretty wonderful to see all of our fellow classmates, like, how they would go about running a campaign, and a lot of people just were happy with the results, and it was great.
Well, as the school year came to an end, we had to face AP exams this past month, which are over. We got through it. The AP field day was fun. And then today, we had, we got summer homework for the AP exams that are coming in the future. And if you're in that room, there was a mixture of excitement and perpetual fear of what the future holds in the classes, and we, next year, will be having an AP Biology course, which my class, for some reason, petitioned to have, even though it's known as the hardest AP. So, we'll be seeing how that goes as we test run it next year. And also, there will be teacher, I believe Ms. Cludie is running a summer session, school thing here, where people can use it for credit recovery, or to take that one tech class that they need to graduate, and just make sure they're up on their credit courses.
As a lot of you are probably aware of, there's a dance recital going on, and that just, I think that shows, our school is being put to really good use, a lot of different organizations. As a member of the student stage crew, I see a lot of organizations renting the place out and holding a lot of events here, and it's really exciting to see our brand-new school get shown off, and everyone using it. And it's just, it's great to see all these groups using it.
And if you want a dance recital, I am more than happy to perform. I would be free the first time, just for all y'all.[1208.33][1208.33](laughing). And, like, as the school year ends, there's also been a lot of club banquets to celebrate all of their accomplishments. Student Council had one here, Band had one at the Green River, where we gave out awards, such as Best Steve, because we have a guy named Steve who volunteers and helps out a lot, and we thought he should get an award. He still had to be voted for the award, though, which I thought was pretty cool. And now, things are wrapping up, there's just a lot of celebration before the anxiety of finals hits us next week.
Last Wednesday, also, there was an assembly in which the juniors received some scholarships, and then also, everyone from all the grades got awards for the different classes that they took part in. I believe five people were awarded scholarships, and if you want to talk about the one that you got?
Oop! There were four to Rochester Polytechnic Institute, each for $80,000 over their four years there, and the one I got was the one to Renaissanceelier Polytechnic Institute. It's a weird name, it's in Troy, New York, I've done research, and it's for $25,000 a year that I attend their college. So if that's five years, that's 125 grand, four years, 120 grand. So, that definitely affects which colleges I'm thinking about.[1297.83][1297.83](laughing). And the Relay for Life happened last weekend, which is always a fun event. I will say, I overslept and missed the guy in the cow costume, like, bringing milk around to everyone, so I was pretty sad about that, as you could probably guess. And the cross-country team ran a total of 327 miles throughout the 24 hours, which is less than normal, but we also have a lot of eighth graders, so just imagine in four years, when that's in the 600s, and we're all just wondering how they do it, and they're just doing it. It's going to be pretty cool. I also got a balloon rabbit.
Tomorrow, hmm, wait, yes, tomorrow, 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 the band is taking a trip to the middle school to go and sort of campaign with all the younger band kids who are there. You know, something that we've been talking about in band is getting to them at a younger age, because as kids come up to the high school, especially in recent years, there's been like the popular kids who quit band and bring all their friends with them away from band, and we need more members. So, tomorrow, we're going down, right after school, while they're still in session, and we are going to have a discussion with them, you know, see where they're at and everything. Should be exciting.
I promise, they asked us to come in, we're not just randomly bombarding them. So, why am I about to, oh, I'll, we just wanted to plug in that, we, it recently came to our attention that our associate principal, Mr. Baumdahl, will have to be leaving us due to personal reasons in his family life, and I will say, I was surprised when someone could even come close to filling in the shoes of Mr. Gaffigan in loveability around the school, and just instant connections with his puzzles, and stories of fishing behind Taylor Swift's house, and just like, big tatted arms versus like bubbly personality, nice juxtaposition, and he is going to be missed, and the students have all, they've been just like, level one of, stage one of denial, and then we'll be going through the stages of grief as the school year ends. And also, on Friday, key club and student council will be volunteering at Federal Street Schools' end-of-the-year banquet, so if you, if you have children that are there, will be face painting, scooping snow cones, interacting with the little kids, probably other stuff I haven't been told about yet, but I'll be doing. So, all the good stuff.
Somewhat recently, this is actually kind of sad, so, a student here who has since moved away, they had a bit of an issue with their family life, someone closer to them passed away, and the school came together as a group, the student council, and the sports teams and everything, and sort of did the best that they could to support him and his family, actually, it was two people brothers, support them and their family, and also, I think the softball team passed a hat around at one of their games.
To offset the funeral.
Yeah, to offset the funeral costs, and sort of alleviate that a little bit. And we're very sad to have that happen to one of our, you know, one of our peers, but he's been doing pretty well so far, you know? His brother went to prom, so, because...
One prom friend, king.
Yeah, and one prom king, it was very exciting, it was a very happy moment amongst all the sadness, but it kind of shows how we can gather together to help one person out, and that sort of made me look at GHS like, wow, we're not that bad.
And neither is our strawberry milk.[1527.65][1527.65](laughing). So, as you probably know, graduation happened a couple of weeks ago, the seniors are gone, us juniors now reign supreme, there's no one above us, it's pretty great. But it was also bittersweet, because I will say, I may or may not have been recreating Niagara Falls onstage and with my instrument. There's no video evidence, so I will never admit to it, but it may have happened, because I love all the seniors, and it was fun seeing how there were some nice surprise awards. Chair Nunez was there handing out the things, and I was just seeing her shake everyone's hands like, oop, I'm out here, council.[1567.86][1567.86](laughing).
All right, to finish off our report tonight, this is the last meeting that we, as representatives, are going to be representing the school at, this is our last meeting of our term, some new people were elected, and that's very exciting. And we just wanted to say thanks for having us here and enjoying our reports, and the end of the year, exciting, can't wait to see what next year brings.
It truly has been an honor to do this, and it's fun, because I know, these might not be the most, these might be the most, some like stale and bland things, so we'll always add flair, and I'll always take the being pulled aside afterwards and being told I was a little too informal, but I entertain, and we're all still getting the message across, and I think, what's better than that? So, thank you for a good year, and...[1623.46][1623.46](laughing).
Well, thank you both very much. I was actually just going to say that, if you wanted to come visit over the summer, you're more than welcome. Are there any questions or comments for our student reps? Okay, yes, Member Hollins?
I thought your reports were great, and you gave some levity to our meetings, but also, I think you did a wonderful job representing the high school, because every report, you talked about different things that were going on, all the different kinds of activities, so I thought you did a great job, and if you're not back next year, I'll miss you.
Member Alexander?
Well, I've actually had the pleasure of watching these two all year long, so I've been entertained a lot more often than everybody here, but I really want to thank you for this, and if you can come up, I'd like to shake your hand real quick.[1683.26][1683.26](laughing).
The fourth law is broken.[1685.26][1685.26](laughing).
Thanks, man. You did good. Summer homework, that's ridiculous. We got to do something about that.
Take care, thanks again. Don't be strangers.[1719.15][1719.15](applause). Okay, well, that's bittersweet. We'll move on to my report. My report is very short, I've heard from multiple members this evening that they have time constraints, so I'll do my best to keep us ahead of schedule, how's that? You like that?
I do.
Yeah. So, with all of that in mind, I will just very quickly run through a few things. I am very honored to have represented the school committee onstage and pass out diplomas at the high school. That was really special for me, and I was really glad to see members of the school committee in the audience, and of course, Mayor Martin on the stage, and congratulations to all of our graduates. In your packets today, we have a copy of the most recent updated school committee agenda calendar. This was the primary outcome of our special meeting that we just had a couple of weeks ago. With that in mind, this is a dynamic document, so it will be changing, it will get added to, Member Alexander uses this in his role as secretary to help keep things moving and keep me... to help keep things moving and keep me informed about what needs to be coming up and where things are. So periodically, we will be, I'll bring them to the committee and make sure that everyone has updated copies of these. And of course, there's room for adding on new agenda items. It's not a rigid document. So that's there in your packet for you, printed out. I did also want to just say that thank you to Member Ward, Vice Chair Ward. I was away for a few days, and he did fill in for me a little bit. And I appreciate you, Cam. Thank you very much for that. It's also my understanding that Member Ward has volunteered to represent the school committee in the Greenfield Middle School Principal Search. I wanted to bring this up to the full committee. If there is any other interest or any opposition to Member Ward representing the school committee, we could have a discussion on that here. I'm not sure if there are any other members that were interested. It's just something that came, came up and came to my attention. Member Hollins?
I don't have any opposition. I have a question. When, when we hire an administrator, like this is a big hire for us, a turnover at the middle school, do the people who sit on the committee just go together and they decide based on who they like in the interview? Or is there criteria like, uh, what are we really looking for in a middle school principal? Since we have this opportunity to change from, is there something we really specifically want? So I'm just interested in whether there's any discussion of what's important in the next pick, assuming everybody's bright and personable. Is there some specific characteristics because of what we need at the middle school? That's all.
Um, I don't have a, are you asking as a rhetorical kind of question? Or would you like a response from me on that?
It's sort of rhetorical, and it interests me, because it seems awfully important. We know what we're after. It's a big hire. I just don't know the process for that.
Sure. My understanding of the process is limited. However, I am aware that the, I believe that the superintendent is putting together a committee of folks that includes teachers, members of the public, uh, representatives from the school committee, administrators. And I believe that there are multiple rounds of interviews. And that is about the extent of the process that I am aware of. But I will most definitely forward your question on to the superintendent. And I believe that if you have input, then you should also articulate that to the superintendent.
Maybe if there's time under new business, just, um, I'm not as interested in who's on the committee as when they come together, is there a clear sense of what we need and what we're looking for?
Thank you, Member Hollins. Okay, and the last thing on, in my notes related to the chair's report, is I just wanted to check in with everyone related to a school committee evaluation, a self-evaluation. This came up during the conversation about the school committee agenda calendar. And it is in our policy to have a self-evaluation annually roughly around the time that we evaluate the superintendent. So I'm curious, just if the school committee would like to entertain a self-evaluation in July or August. We will be evaluating the superintendent next month. So it would be appropriate timing and in compliance with our policy. We do have it sort of penciled in for the following year. But if we would like to have one this summer, we, it would be nice to know that. So can I just kind of have a show of hands if there are folks that are interested in having a school committee self-evaluation in July or August? Sure, yeah. So I don't, in the time that I've served on the committee, I have never been a part of a school committee self-evaluation. I know that there are evaluation tools that are available for school committees to use. And I think maybe a good solution would be to do a little research and bring something to July and take a look at what we have in July, and then do our evaluation actually in August. So I'll, I'll put it on as an agenda item to discuss how we might do a self-evaluation for next month. And then we can actually maybe do it in August. How's that? Member Hollins?
Uh, last year around this time, we set a few goals for the school committee. I remember at that time, we weren't going to set school district goals. It, there were just a few goals on how we function with each other, do we keep minutes? So maybe, since this is the first one, we could look at our, what goals we set and did we meet them? It's just, maybe it's not so complicated.
Are you referring to the governance goals that were voted in December?
I think we set a few for ourselves, that we do a better job keeping minutes. Or I don't remember what they were exactly, but...
Okay. That's great. So, uh, there is a copy of the superintendent's report that is here in your packet. I'm not gonna read through this tonight, but I believe that you all have the opportunity to read through it yourselves. If there's any questions for the superintendent, please forward them on to her. There's a lot of information here. And are there any questions that you want to raise right now related to the superintendent report? Or any other comments related to my report or the superintendent's report before we move on? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the subcommittees. Let's start with the Health, Safety and Facilities Subcommittee. Member Karen will be reporting out. And you have new minutes that are in front of you. These were not included in the digital packet, but they should be in your physical packet here. And Member Karen, take it away.
So this past meeting, we spent the entire time discussing what we would think about the next steps for Green River School. We spent a lot of time, we heard from the superintendent about possible, what she thought might be a good discussion or choice. And then we sort of brought up other ideas and questions. And we sort of came to consensus at the end that there were six goals that we felt like in our quest to find the correct thing to do for next year, they would be feasible, doable, meet an immediate need, voted with support by the committee and the community. They would include partnerships or have a space to maybe future include partnerships. That redistricting at this time was not a great choice. And that we would hope to, we cannot generate revenue in the building per the ordinance. But if we can get that building open, we can get school choice seats in other buildings. So those were our criteria, and we came to consensus at the end that we really would like to get a more formal proposal from the superintendent on what she would like to happen next year. She proposed an alternative high school type solution. And that would just be a small start to getting us back in the building and leave us plenty of space to grow and change as time needed.
Thank you, Member Karen. Are there any questions or comments? Member Hollins?
I have a comment. That is, I know that we still have to finalize the budget, but I recall that in the budget we voted, there was no money for reopening Green River School, although there's a, there will be a plan to reopen it. So I was going to recommend that the budget Subcommittee look at the costs for making the school operational in 2018. I think that will take a little bit of time. I'm pretty sure technology was stripped from the building and phones were stripped from the building. And there's some base operation costs, like custodial services, no matter what the program is. That maybe we could get a jump on that if the budget Subcommittee took that up.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Any other questions or comments? And so what I'm hearing is that there's a recommendation out of the Subcommittee to, to the full committee to direct the superintendent to put forward a comprehensive or a full proposal related to an alternative high school for the Green River School building to meet the six, uh, criteria that were outlined by the Health, Safety and Facilities Subcommittee, to be feasible, doable, meet an immediate need.
Yes, that was the, it was clear that that was, I have to say that Cameron and I were both very much on board with that decision. Susan very much felt like we really needed to be sure that all six of those points were met. I agreed with that. The proposal is just a first step.
Okay.
In that it would be a very comprehensive proposal, operating costs, reopening costs, everything like that. Then we have to be approved by the MSBA. So even if we think this is a good plan, she would give us this proposal, we would say, yes, we like your plan. Then we have to submit it. And they may say, nope, that's not a great plan. That doesn't fit this need, or they just don't like the plan. So it's the first step in making a plan. We can absolutely reject that proposal if we decide it doesn't fit all of our criteria. We don't think it's a great fit. But the superintendent didn't want to spend approximately, she said it would take about sixty days to make a plan, all of that time if it wasn't something we were interested in. So if we're not interested in it, it's okay to say, you know what? We're not interested in it. And that's fine, too. We thought it was a good plan to start us and get us back in the building.
Okay, so I'll take a step back. And I, what I'm hearing is that we are looking for a motion to direct the superintendent to put together a more comprehensive proposal related to an alternative high school program at the Green River School, including operating costs and beyond. Is that inaccurate? Or would you like to offer any words for a motion? Member Hollins?
I'd like to make a motion, but I'd like to clarify there were... I think the proposal about the high school was suggested for about twelve students. That's a big building. And there were some other suggestions about needed alternatives that weren't only high school.
Okay.
And there, there was some discussion that the building before has been used for different programs. So this may not be the right motion, but I'd like to make a motion that we seek a proposal for Green River School being reopened as an alternative school setting. And my motion's not only for the high school, because there were some issues at really at all grade levels, some interesting ideas about need for an alternative. That may not suit the committee, but I don't think it should be limited just to high school.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Member Ward. Is there any discussion on this? Mayor Martin?
I believe we had an alternative high school proposal on the grant, completely written about two or three years ago. And there was a lot of work put into that proposal. Is there any way we can utilize that information to accelerate the plan that might be proposed now? If it's limited to, I don't know what the number is, twelve students? Or if it's greater than or less than an alternative high school, then that should be also included? Is that part of this discussion?
So yes, when we were at the meeting, Jordana did point out to us that approximately two years ago, the current principal of the high school had written a proposal for the Bar Foundation for an alternative high school. So that has been created. It does need some rework for the specific situation. And the way it was presented to me, and this is the way I understood it, was that this is just the first step in getting twelve or so students back in that building, because that we can do by fall. We cannot make a huge district change that quickly. So by getting us slightly operational, the next year, we could facilitate getting more stuff in the building, making partnerships with GCC perhaps. This is just one part of the big plan. Her proposal probably will include more stuff than just, this is what I want, step one. It'll probably be, this is step one, this is step two, this is step three. And I do agree with Susan that we did discuss other parts of this, that it doesn't necessarily only have to be a high school. But that seems like the most concrete plan for fall 2018 was specifically high school, just for this year, at least. Yeah, right. And if we just go with alternative school, she can still give us a proposal that says alternative high school, step one. Maybe eventually middle school or whatever. I don't think that we've limited ourselves with that motion. I think we can say yes and move forward.
Any other comments? Okay, I do actually just want to reiterate what you just said, Member Karen. And Member Ward, I believe you were part of the discussion also. I just want to make sure that the motion that's getting put forward isn't too limiting, and it is a reflection of what your Subcommittee wants to see and is recommending to the full committee. And I'm seeing nods.
Yeah.
So if the language there feels appropriate to you, then, okay. We have a motion. Yes, Susan?
The motion right now agrees to seek a proposal for the Green River School. And I wondered if you wanted to clarify from whom?
From superintendent.
From the superintendent.
Is that the whole motion?
No, she just got that far.
To seek a proposal for the Green River School being reopened as an alternative school setting.
Yes, the intent is to request that the, to direct the superintendent to put together a proposal for the Green River School. Yeah. Is everyone clear on what we're voting on? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you. Who wants to go next? Policy? Policy?
Okay, on the 22nd of May, I kind of had a back-to-back Subcommittee meetings between the policy and the personnel. And I'll start off with policy real quick. Is that on the 22nd of May, our discussions included policy BGE Subcommittee of the school committee. And we also continued discussion of students not being picked up from school or being returned to school on school bus after the schools are closed for the day. On policy BGE Subcommittee of the school committee, that policy is in revision right now. We are redefining, and we're actually looking for clarification of the description for each one of the Subcommittee of our full committee. And so we'll be picking that back up next month. Between now and the next meeting, would appreciate any input from any chairs or any member to help clarify what each Subcommittee should be saying, described as. The other one is the students not being picked up. We continuing discussions with the superintendent. Right now, the superintendent is continuing to look for options and refine, refining a possible plan for the district that also guarantees student safety and well-being, but also helping this, uh, the schools out with this issue that tends to come up quite often. The other area that we were able to pick up with on that meeting was is that we've been able to identify that there are actually three different areas that we need to focus in on. And the plan may be bigger than it need, than we originally thought. And the areas are students that are not being picked up at the bus stop and being returned by the bus driver, areas related to special education and students. And of course, then the last one is the students that are not picked up from the school facility themselves. And then on tonight's agenda, you do have policy JLD along with JLDE, the original copies that are in force at this moment. Tonight, you're gonna be doing the second reading on JLDE, which has draft on the very top. So you basically have two copies of the other policies to refer to. And then you actually have the one for a second reading. Personnel and Negotiations Subcommittee met also on the 22nd. And our first meeting on the 22nd was, we entered into executive session to just discuss, or discuss contract with the teachers' union, in which later on that week was brought into this last special session where we voted a contract agreement. On the 11th of June, our committee had to come back together again to continue our work. This time, we focused our discussion on legal representation and renewal of our agreements with our two attorneys for the city. Conversation did not come to a final recommendation, but we have produced a list of criteria helping us frame what we need to be looking at when we're looking at our agreements with the attorneys. And this conversation is scheduled to be picked back up on our next meeting later this month. And finally, our discussion ended up with, with the superintendent's evaluation being moved to be completed in the month of July. We've had to refine the timeline of how the work is going to be done so we could do the job right and professional. And later on in the agenda, I will be presenting the actual timeline. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Alexander. And did Budget Subcommittee meet? And did budget subcommittee meet since our last meeting? Member Ward?
No, we have not. We're starting a meeting for Monday.
Okay. Thank you. School committee representatives, did the collaborative meet? Member Ekstrom? Nope, no meeting of the collaborative? Okay. And Member Hollins, the...
Planning and construction.
Planning and construction did meet. It's a committee that talks about all the planning and construction for the whole city. It does include the schools. There was some discussion of Green River School. The repair work that involves state building is finished, and they're working on the remediation of asbestos, which is different. And it's just exciting to hear what's going on around the city under Mayor Martin, all kinds of plans for things you wouldn't otherwise hear about. So that the committee spent time talking about its role with capital. But that's all. And there will be a one-page profile of every single building in the city that'll be helpful to the school system, because it will say the age something was built, when the roof was put on, when the heating system was redone, when everything is redone to help everybody plan capital.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Any questions for Member Hollins? Okay. Seeing done, we will move on to our regular business. Principal Goodwin, if you would like to join us. We have our first agenda item is the Newton School Principal, Melody Goodwin. We've invited Melody here to tell us a little bit about what's going on at Newton School. Part of what the committee has expressed numerous times is to hear from all of our schools, and we appreciate you coming. I didn't receive any kind of, or solicit any particular specific questions for you in advance, so the floor is all yours. Please fill us in as you choose.
Newton School is one of my favorite topics to talk about. It's an amazing school with amazing staff and amazing students. Does your mic? Thank you.
Okay, so I will start out. At Newton School, we have about 240 K through four students. And it's an amazing staff with amazing students. And it is truly, says that actually on the sidewalk right now, if you walk through our doors. We are very proud of the fact that we do innovative things every single day. We are an expanded learning time school. Our school day is 90 minutes longer. We just had a ELT visit, which the site visit is a day long. Where teachers are observed throughout the day, our programs are evaluated. It's happened every year since I've been at Newton School. This binder sort of represents something that is put together that represents all of the different things that we do. We had positive comments behind our visit. The things we highlighted or showcased were new things to our school. We're very proud of our music program, and we've gone to a whole new level with something called Drumming Alive, which includes music. Core balls used as drums. We've taken them to the radio station so the kids could perform. We have some videos that are amazing. And we also are very proud of something we learned about from other ELT schools across the state called Playworks. I was lucky enough that the Greenfield Educational Foundation funded the training, and last summer, our teachers went to a two-full-day training on Playworks. Playworks is the belief that your playground is an instructional space. It is where you teach something that's really important, conflict resolution, because it's the playground where the action really happens in every school. And we know that. So we actually have staff that were all trained in something about how to teach children games, how to resolve differences. We rock things out at Newton School. We do rock, paper, scissors if there's a conflict resolution, and the kids all know how to rock it out. It solves so many problems that as an adult, you can't even believe. We learned that we thought it would take a week to teach Foursquare to a group of children. It took us three weeks. We learned that first graders do not naturally come to school knowing how to bounce a ball. So we have spent a lot of time really working with children on the positive aspects of play. Our children actually have a class called Playworks, so they are outside actually twice the amount of time as we were last year. And they get choice. The games, we have something called Yak Track for the children who, where they can walk and talk, that's why Yak Track, which is popular for kids who maybe don't want to do the team sports. But one of the goals of Playworks is that they are all physically active for the time they're there. So we're very happy with that, and that's one of the things that we really believe has cut down on discipline reports, it's cut down on just everything. It's changed the culture of our school in a positive way. The third thing that we did newt this year was called Girls on the Run. We had a team of girls run a 5K at Springfield College. Two of our staff volunteered to be coaches for Girls on the Run, and it was an amazing experience for the girls in our school. They're very proud of their experience and their sneakers and their water bottles, and they have special 5K bags. This week is all about, if I think about this time of the year, it's about going places and doing things outside the walls of Newton School. So tomorrow, our first grade is traveling to the fire station and learning about our community, and they probably will stop at different places on the way. I told them they were welcome to stop at the mayor's office on the way back, Mayor Martin. And on Friday, I have the second grade going to the Discovery Center to learn about fish. And then the, let's see, the third grade just went to Old Deer Field. The fourth grade just went to Look Park. And our kindergarten, we're very excited, is going to the Hitchcock Center to learn about the life of a tree. We were recognized this year for breakfast in the classroom. One of the things I'm very proud of about Greenfield, and it was the middle school and Federal Street and Newton, we were written about in this beautiful magazine about ending school hunger, which I think is bravo to Greenfield. We also received checks, which we were all happy to go get at the State House. So it's been a strange year where we were invited to the State House twice in one month. One for a breakfast in the classroom. And then I have a first-grade teacher, Ms. Mickey Warren, who for three years has won a contest called My Ideal School, where first graders across the state of Massachusetts write about what they think their ideal school. And Ms. Zoe Burton King went to the State House and her, I didn't bring her little article, but she believes Newton School needs a roller coaster, so we're going to work on that. So there's been a lot of positive energy at Newton School. We're planning for next year. It's a time of transition. I have report cards in the car that need my signature. And so it's a lot of things. But there is something that we need your help with, and it really has to do with, I really want to just go next door to dance, school attendance is something that needs to be addressed. But there's also something bigger about school attendance, and I'm hoping the policy committee can look at that.
Okay.
Do you want me to?
Thanks, Mayor Martin.
I can go out and ask them to be quiet a little bit.
Sure.
Hey Chair, could we call a quick five-minute recess?
Sure.
Want to do that?
Is that okay with everyone to take a five-minute recess? Okay.
Sure.
Five-minute recess. Don't go anywhere.
Okay.
Thank you. We have returned from our recess. Thanks, everyone. Mel, take it away.
Newton School, as part of our grant and as part of just active innovators, we use data every day. We collect data and we pilot a lot of new ideas. So the data that Greenfield should be really proud of is, NWA map has been used for here for 10 years. It's used in the fall, the winter, and the spring. And in the middle of the year, every school has something called a data day, so we actually analyze and adjust. We change what we do because of what the children need, and that's, that's a great thing. We're always recognized for our use of data. Actually, I have a binder as big as that one, and that is all the data. We use things called Dibbles. We have blended learning, so we use some computer-based programs that produce data. Our children love Lexia, Accelerated Reader, fast math, which is a nice way to learn your addition facts, your subtraction facts. So there's a lot of data that teachers use regularly to make adjustments. We have a lot of interventions for kids throughout. Our elementary schools, our middle school are school-wide Title I schools, so any child can get the extra support from the specialists in our schools. The biggest challenge Greenfield faces is school attendance. And I beg on behalf of teachers, principals, and students for the school committee to look at attendance, because it gets to a bigger issue if a child misses 81 days of school. We, we have a lot of children missing a lot of school, and it's not an elementary problem, it's not a Newton problem, it is a district problem. And then a teacher is faced with a report card, and what do they do? Do we say that we're going to keep the child back because they've missed so many days of school? Principals meet with parents, we file something called 51As with DCF about attendance. Those are often, DCF will not really address the attendance issue. So there needs to be a policy around school attendance and promotion to protect our staff, because one of our concerns, I was meeting with teachers today, is that you're going to have children who keep going through the grades, and there's usually a pattern with children with problems with attendance. They miss 50 days in kindergarten, they miss 50 days in first grade, all the way through. And if we keep promoting them, they will get to the high school and not able to read. And then you may face some legal problems with that. So the teachers need the protection of a policy, so do the principals of our, our district around school attendance. As part of our ELT site visit, attendance was a focus, because our data is being looked at, at the state. It is a concern. Also, we have a homeless grant, and our homeless coordinators, Sarah Slaughterback, actually dropped by my school to talk about the fact that attendance is an issue. So there's, one of the things we learned in our ELT site visit that we didn't know is our schools are leveled. There's level one, level two, level three, level four. And in the past, it was always based on those scary, scary MCAS scores. You know, if the kids got certain scores, you were level one or, well, we've just found out that even if our kids did really well on their MCAS scores, but they, we have poor attendance, it can affect our leveling. So how our schools are being viewed is also, attendance is becoming a big deal. So right now at Newton School, last year, we had 40 children who missed more than 30 days of school. My guidance counselor personally called every single parent. She went to visit homes, talked with parents, and she physically sort of hurt herself trying to reach out and do community action. And this year, we have 42 who have missed more days. So there are many children across our town who aren't getting the benefit of the amazing school programs that we have and the, and the interventions we have. And some of them could be doing so much better if they just were there. But I'm also proud, I have two students with perfect attendance this year, which we're going to, and two teachers with perfect attendance, who I'm going to celebrate at the end of our school year. So I'm open to any questions you may have.
Yes, Mayor Martin.
Yeah. Principal Goodwin, you've spoken of the crisis of attendance for probably three years.
I have.
Have you, or has the district provided any interventions that have failed or that have been successful in the past three years?
I think the things we've tried, which haven't been successful, are the one-on-one contact with parents. We have also filed 51As with DCF, and we've used data. So like, we go all the way back. So if it's a fourth grader, we go back to kindergarten and we show the pattern that exists. And DCF does not use that as a criteria to, sometimes they'll call a parent, but they are very few and far, far between willing to do anything about school attendance.
Is there any, I noticed you had, what, 40 students with 30 hours or 30 students?
Yes, you and I have had this conversation. I even gave you addresses. So I, I really believe that DCF, it's really not about the children, it's about supporting the parents to help them get the children to school. And how can we do that in a better way? So the only thing that the elementary school hasn't done is gone to court, which is something that can happen, but we, realistically, each time I've been to court, I sit on a bench all day long. And I'm, I did that for three days for another case and never got to see a judge. So the courts are definitely backed up. That's the only piece we have not done.
And it reminds me of, two years ago, we had the president of the union, Tom, come in and speak to us about the, the crisis of substitute teaching.
Yes.
So I would guess that the substitute teachers are replacing the teachers. So is there any correlation between these student attendance and teacher attendance?
None. None. I don't see that. I think there's always a crisis for substitute teachers, because there just aren't enough of them. I think we do a great job of managing to be flexible in our schools to make our programs survive the loss of a staff. My school attendance is, my staff attendance is excellent. It is very seldom that my staff is out, and it's usually because some flu virus is going through our building, and it's just, they can't even talk, or they can't even function, or they got pink eye. You know, the adults unfortunately get sick. But I do have two staff members with perfect attendance and many who are very seldom out. The children, it really, I believe, everything, every conversation we've had is many of our parents struggle, I think, getting up in the morning to get their children off to school. They'll say things to us like, I couldn't get him to go to school. I, you know, or the kids were up all night watching video games, and so they are tired, so they don't want to get up. I mean, there's a lot of different conversations that happen with the parents, but it's really about establishing a routine. And I think the biggest problem is in kindergarten, you can see where parents are struggling, and that's where I think the, the practice of getting up and going to school is set, because it's the first year in our schools.
I only mention that because of the studies that show with the, some family dysfunctions, the child develops a bond with the teacher, and then when the teacher isn't there, there's kind of like a loss. And substitute teachers don't...
But we see that right now, because many children are starting to miss their children, their teachers right now, and so they start to get worried about missing them. We see that at this time of the year. I haven't seen that link, at least not at Newton School. I really feel it's a socio, a social issue that's out there right now. We've tried different interventions with parents, really talking with parents, being, offering help. My guidance counselor's actually gone to homes to try to help with that. We reward kids when they're at school. Different principals I know in our, our town have done different things that are positive, but it's just getting them there. But when we keep saying, it doesn't matter if you come to school, you're going to go to the next grade, it doesn't matter if you get all Fs on your report card, you're going to go to the next grade. I think there, there has to be some clear value to coming to school. And I think that's one of the things that teachers are feeling like, I can teach, is my heart out every single day, and I can come to work every day. Children don't come to school, children fail my class, and what happens? They go on to the next grade. And the kid's getting further, further in behind. So I think it's, we talk about rigor in Massachusetts and increasing the rigor so that kids are ready for college. So it's something that needs to be addressed and talked about, because it exists in our schools. How can we make sure there's a scaffolded set of interventions or criteria? I mean, when is the cutoff date? I think the principals have probably debated that for hours and hours, is it? We send home a letter for when a child has missed 10 days of school, we send home a letter when they've missed 15 days of school, we send a letter when they've missed 20, we file a 51A when they've missed 12. So we do all these steps, but it's not, it's not solving the problem.
So we continue to have the same problem, and we continue to do the same thing?
Well, this year, we actually did personal contact, personal meetings with parents. And it actually, my data was 40 last... And it actually, my data was 40 last year, and I'm up to 42 this year, so.
Is there any guiding principle or leadership position within the district that is going to culminate with a solution to this constant problem?
In my history as a principal, which is 23 years, I believe, the only successful intervention I ever saw was in South Hadley. We had a retired police officer who just wanted to make a little extra money. He was a street officer, and he would, principals were allowed to call him, and he would go knock on doors and explain to parents that they would have to go to court if their children didn't show up at school. And it was amazing, he would personally bring them to school. It was, he knew what to say. He knew the town that he had worked in his whole career and was able to bring kids to school. We had police officers in that town who would see kids skateboarding on the street and ask them why they weren't in school, and they would bring them in the cruiser to school. So I think there just has to be a community intervention, because there are always children who are not in school. And so where are they? They're here. They're in town.
But don't you think that would come from the school committee and not from?
Yes, that's why I'm here bringing it to you. I feel that as a school committee, it's a good conversation to have, especially as you're looking at policies, because we need your help. The teachers need your help, the principals need your help around this concern, which is attendance.
Any other members have any questions for?
I do, actually, just because I have no idea. Is it, so someone who says they can't get their child up to go to school, they don't bring them later? Do you see kids that come in later and so they have to have attendance?
We have some chronic tardiness. We have kids who've missed 70 days of math because they get their aftermath is over. So yes, we do have tardiness as well, yes.
And is that with the same sort of cohort of students?
Yes.
Mel, I'm really interested in how Newton School is meeting the needs of all of our students. Are you still doing walk to math and walk to reading, or how are you challenging students where they are?
We have done a lot of different models. One of the most exciting, which I, you know, it's hard to remember everything you've done in June, is we have connected with the preschool, and we're very excited about that. It's long overdue. We're piloting something called Letterland. And Marissa Ross, who's the preschool principal, and myself, we took volunteer teachers to a training on Letterland. Letterland, it comes out of England. It's an amazing program for kids to learn their alphabet, writing, and it starts in preschool. So the idea is that we're doing some action research with some preschool teachers who are going to start, and then kindergarten. And what was exciting at kindergarten registration is a child walked into Jackie Swiss's classroom and said, "Miss Swiss is on the Letterland train too." So what was wonderful is we're trying to start earlier, and so giving the kids the head start in academics, that in a fun way. Letterland is very active in dancing, and it's something that the teachers are trying to see if it will make a difference. It's a pre-K through 1 program, so we're actually collecting data on those children compared to kids who aren't doing Letterland to see if it, the research says that children will learn their alphabet faster with Letterland, so we're trying to see if it's a more effective program than what we currently do. Interventions in our school, I'm very proud. We have less reading interventions than we did last year. So last year, we had 100 children out of the children in our school getting something called Spire, which is an Orton-Gillingham-based program, for 90 minutes of direct instruction in reading in a group of four or five children. And some children got double doses because we felt they needed them. And this year, we actually, about 50 children are getting intervention, so we've cut that in half, and that's a really great thing for us. Then we have walk to read where it's physically possible, which is always the hard part with scheduling. And we have some walk to math, but one of the things that came about was we sort of adjusted our schedule this year. So our third grade teaches math first thing in the morning, so it's able to do better interventions. The things that have tripled is our ELL interventions, so that we, last year, at this, you know, when I walked into Newton School, there were nine ELL students. Today, I have 42. So Miriam Robinson is one of the most amazing human beings, and she, so for her to do her groups, sometimes conflicts with other interventions, but it is a priority for us to make sure our ELL students get their needs met. So many of our interventions are blended. They are computer-based. Our grant has allowed us to buy Chromebooks, so we're very proud. In every single classroom, the teachers have six to eight Chromebooks, except for kindergarten and first grade. We're piloting iPads in kindergarten and first grade because we think they're easier to clean. And so the teachers are very excited about that. So you can just wipe them down with an alcohol wipe instead of all the little crevices on a Chromebook. And the teachers are using technology as a center-based, so it's very individualized. So if the child needs 20 minutes more of Lexia, or they need to do something online, it's based on what they need. We're also very proud that we are truly blessed to have Jamie Witherell in our school. She is amazing at Donors Choose, and she has brought in over $50,000 worth of things that teachers have requested. We are into alternative seating. If you come, it's very rare that we sit in chairs like this. We have bikes, we have core balls, we have different mobility type of issues. And she, this year, brought in Cosmic Yoga, Jamie from Cosmic Yoga. And so there have been a lot of exciting things around that. And that has also helped with our interventions. So some of the teachers got technology through Donors Choose. One of my reading teachers, for children who are really struggling with reading, she actually got, I think they're Kindles, so that they can listen to the story while they're reading it, and it's not scary. So if you're reading below grade level, nobody knows it, it's just cool, you're on a Kindle. So nobody really can see what you're reading. It sort of protects the kid's pride, and we're doing a lot with that. Math is something we struggle with. I mean, it really has to do with our data. When we had MCAS data, when I first came to Newton School, we only had one child who was in needs improvement in math. I was like, wow, there's nothing to worry about. Then we switched to Park, and we like fell down the math well. And was it what was being tested? You know, that was part of our concern. So we're kind of anxious to see what our MCAS data looks like and whether there's a concern about math or not. Our, we are definitely, right now, according to our MAP data, stronger in literacy because we really focus, our goal is that every third grader will learn to read and loved books. So we work hard on that. We're also planning for the Title I summer program this summer, where, again, teachers from across the district at each elementary school come together and to continue those same interventions. So a child who's getting Spire right now was invited to come to school in July and get that same intervention from a reading specialist. And we're very excited. What, some, we always have to plan a fun thing for summer. And this year, we, Rachel Cummings agreed to do robotics, and so we have BBOPs and Lego Robotics already running around our school. And so that'll be an exciting piece. And we have books about robotics for the kids to connect to literacy. So we're excited about that. And right now, 50 children are signed up for that program this summer. So the interventions are really individually based. Every week, there's a meeting on Monday where we talk about teachers, if they have a concern, if a child's not progressing the way they need to, and what we can change to help that child.
Thank you. Any other member questions or comments?
I was hoping you would mention the robotics, just because some of the middle school students are volunteering to help at the summer programs. They can help.
They did a great job. They actually took all the robotics that were, they were ordered, and they were sitting in my office, and Rachel came in, picked them up. She was so excited, just opening the boxes. And so the middle school students put them all together for us, and it was so funny because they showed me in five minutes what I could not have figured out probably in an hour, how to make them blink and do all these different things. So we're excited to have that kind of a partnership.
Fantastic. Member Hollins, any questions?
I just want to thank you for coming and for explaining a little how you, a lot of very creative things, but also how you address academics. Sounds like you individualize for students that are below grade level, at grade level, and above grade level?
Absolutely. It's always, to challenge a child and make sure that they're not bored is on my radar as much as the children who are, you know, not growing maybe as fast as they should. You know, you see even a child who's proficient, who's missed 30 days of school, and you're like, if they were here for 30 days, they would move into advance. So I think there's, you know, we call it Massachusetts Individual Success Plans. So in January, we're, you know, we actually sit down with paper and try to put a plan together for every child to improve them. I, we, one of our ELT activities is book club. So if I have a child, I did a book club last year with Maniac McGee, which is more of a sixth grade book, with a group of students who were ready to read a sixth grade novel and have a conversation around issues that were affecting their daily lives. So we really work hard to make sure. And we also work really hard to make sure that they're exposed to the arts. I mean, that is a big piece for us, the music. And, you know, our Hoopiverse teachers are coming back for field days, so we'll be hula-hooping and reading. Drumming Alive, the kids love. It puts it all together, the wellness, the, we have a garden. If you haven't been to our green, our Newton School garden, the garden club helped fund that, so we're very thankful for that. There's so much going on, and I invite all of you to just come visit and walk through our halls and see what's going on.
Thank you, Mel.
Yep.
Thank you, Principal Goodwin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next business item is the school choice vote. You'll see a one-page document with the superintendent's recommendation for available seats for school choice, based on each individual school. There is also a little paragraph in the superintendent's report about school choice. I'll read it quickly. "The Greenfield Public Schools follows Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 76, Section B12 in regards to the acceptance and admission of school choice. School choice seats are only made available when there are remaining seats in an existing class, and the school choice tuition dollars are provided to the district from the sending district. When the number of school choice applicants who wish to enroll in the Greenfield Public Schools exceeds the number of available school choice seats, a lottery is held to determine that applicants are accepted without regard for race, gender, or other protected class. Lottery dates are held in July and again in the fall, as required by the law. To the greatest extent possible, our projections account for anticipated enrollment of Greenfield Public Schools students to ensure that there is adequate space for Greenfield residents first and foremost. Current projections of seats that will be available are provided to the committee. Some changes may occur as summer enrollments take place." So at this time, the recommendation for school choice seats is in the third column of this document. It is, it looks like this. It has the seal at the top. That's correct. At this time, I think we should entertain a motion to support the superintendent's recommendation for school choice seats for the FY19 school year. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second by member Karen. And discussion member Hollins.
My understanding is we have quite a bit of in and out over the summer. I think it may be as much as 100 students in and out every year, just in the summer. And I was wondering if we could put at the bottom a statement that said something like, "These numbers are subject to review by the school committee based on changes in attendance," or something. So if we had hypothetically 30 more students transfer to Hawaii from the high school, we might want to reconsider the number of student seats we had available. That's all, just a
Okay, any other discussion? Mayor Martin?
Is it possible to have a breakdown of students by class? For instance, Greenfield High School, 465 students expected, but there's no reference to the class. It's just, and of course, we know there are five classes there.
Yes, I, okay, thank you for clarifying your question. I don't have that information here today. Is that something that you'd like in advance of taking a vote on school choice seats? And I did speak briefly with the superintendent regarding her recommendations here, and these are essentially maximum thresholds, and they're conservative numbers that she's putting forward for the available seats. Again, taking into account Greenfield residents and potential fluctuation in student enrollment.
Certainly predicting who's going to sign up between now and September or October first is difficult to do.
Very.
But I think for us to choose which class would receive, have the option for choice in without knowing how many are in that class is foolhardy. So it's just a guessing game times two. 18 at the high school, it would be interesting to know where, we just graduated 70, 72 or 75 from the senior class.
I believe it was 80 together. Member Alexandra just passed me an enrollment document. It's a few months old, but there are numbers for the eighth grade at 135, the ninth grade 85, 10th grade 72, 11th grade 85, and 12th grade at the time of this document was 90. And that gave a total of 467 students at the Greenfield High School building.
Okay, that helps. So it looks like the request is for five eighth grade students? When we have 135 there already, that's our highest class?
The eighth grade, that's the eighth grade, current eighth grade, so next year, those will be
Those are the numbers that are in each grade at the high school this year.
Right now.
They are a couple of months old, it fluctuates. My usual habit is I, whenever I check in with register, I get the latest numbers as up to date. So you're within a couple of, in each grade, you're just within one or two off.
And do you have the number for the seventh grade currently?
Seventh grade right now, in the Math and Science Academy, I have 34. And in middle school, I have 88.
So we have 135 now in the eighth grade, just taking one class, 135 now in the eighth grade, 122 in the seventh grade. Supposedly 122 will then go to the eighth grade, so we have 12 seats available in the eighth, with current numbers. And then those 135 would then go from the eighth grade, go to the ninth grade, but we know that doesn't always happen. As you can see from last year, when a larger, a triple-digit number of eighth graders moved to the ninth grade and double-digit numbers. So
We don't know how many are going to the vocational school.
Right. So I'm, I'm fine. I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud and adding out loud. I don't have any problem with the numbers for the choice. Forty-one, I'm just thinking, that's fine.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. Member Ward was before you, member Hollins?
I was just going to say that I'm trusting that the superintendent knows that if we got 135 kids in a particular class, and there may be, she's saying there's five available seats. I mean, I'm sure that there's, because you've got such a large class, the number of teachers, number of classes that are available, distributing five among those is not as impactful as maybe adding three to a class of 90. is not as, is, is impactful as maybe adding three to a class of 90. It's all relative. I'm, I'm trusting that if this is her recommendation, I mean, she has all of those other numbers as well, not just how many students are in the class, but how many teachers are able to handle that, what is the capacity of the building, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you, Member Ward. Member Hollins?
I have no issue with the superintendent's recommendation. I think I've heard that we have more applicants for high school, just what I hear, I don't know if it's true as the year goes on, and then sometimes you're locked in because we set a number right now. So I'd like, again, to recommend just a statement, something like, due to significant enrollment fluctuations over the summer, the school committee may adjust openings available, or something, just so we could come back to it if we needed to.
So I believe the original motion was, was yours. So are you suggesting to change the motion to include?
Well, my motion is to support this.
Okay.
And then maybe I'd make another one to add a statement of just flexibility. So if there is a demand and there aren't seats, we could come back to it, we're not stuck with something that's intractable when it's in our interest to do something different.
Okay. I don't, that is not a live motion at this time, right? You said that you wanted to keep the original motion as it was. Mayor Martin?
Yeah, I, I believe the law calls for the school committee to vote on school choice, not to specifically designate the number of seats per class.
Okay.
Because it's, the way it's listed with DESI is your school district and whether you voted yes or no for choice.
Thank you, Mayor Martin.
Check that out, Dan.
Dan's checking it out. Yes, please. Is that your understanding, Susan?
Well, either way, we could take a vote to support at this time what the superintendent's planning on doing.
Sure. Susan Farber, could you repeat the motion?
To support the superintendent's recommendation for school choice seats for fiscal year 19, for the fiscal year 19, school year.
Thank you. And I do think that that motion language is open enough to provide some flexibility down the line if we wanted to change. I think it's stating to support what she's put forward, just to support the superintendent's recommendations today. Do we want to wait for Secretary Alexander, or are we comfortable voting? I'm seeing we're comfortable voting. Okay. So are we, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion, was that an aye from you too?
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. And Member Hollins?
I'd like to make another motion.
Sure.
That we add to our basic letter, just the form letter, at the bottom, a statement of flexibility, which is, due to significant enrollment fluctuations, the school committee may adjust openings available. Just lets everybody know that we may take another vote.
I'm not sure. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, second by Member Ward, yes, Member Ward?
Just out of curiosity, are we saying we can never come back to the table here during this school year? If, if something happens and 40 kids decide to move to the West Coast and one class becomes-
I think it doesn't happen because we make a fixed decision. That's why I think it's important just to have something that says you can come back.
If, if you don't think we can come back, then I'm, I'd be in favor of adding something, sure. You can't hurt.
Are you, are you looking it up? Let's take a-
I think the law says that if you want out, you have to vote, but otherwise, you're in.
The question is, is do we need to lock in the number and ask to stay locked for the entire duration, or can we come back later?
We don't know, seem to know the answer to this question.
It's not so much whether you can, it's whether our practice encourages that, or lets everybody know that. So you get people handling the phone that says, I'm sorry, we had two seats, those seats are gone, and, and that thought isn't, and when they're looking at this, everybody's looking at this piece of paper, that thought of, oh, maybe we can go back, it's not an operational thought. But it would be if everybody looking at this, the school committee can reconsider.
I'd like us to take just a minute to look at, look up the law. Member Alexander's on it. This is a letter that's addressed to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, so-
It's a template.
Yeah.
I recall that there's an advisory that requests you notify the Department of Ed, and the first time I did that, they asked me, why are you doing this? I don't think everyone does it.
I'm using the internet to look up Massachusetts General Law, School Attendance, Section 12B-C.
I was texting my wife.
Did you find it? Do you see anything specific to?
We're sending notes electronically.
Good thing I learned how to read. Okay, Chapter 76, Section 12B, Paragraph C. "No later than May of every year, the school committee of each town, regional school district shall submit a report to the department stating the capacity of each school in said city, town, or regional school district for the following year, the number of students expected to attend each school in said town, city, or regional school district following the year, the number of students attending the school districts under the terms section prior to the school year, the number of students who are expected to no longer be attending, and the number of seats, of additional seats therefore available to non-resident students, reduced by the number of students enrolled under the program for elimination of racial imbalance, as provided in Section 12A, said in charter school, each school." So, pretty much, by this time, we're supposed to report what the reality is at this point, and that's what the law is asking for.
Just at this point, there's no, like, locked in.
It's not coming in saying, you know, come back later and say if you're raising it or lowering it, so.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Susan Farber, could you repeat the motion?
To add to the basic letter, DESI, at the bottom, a statement of flexibility. Due to significant enrollment fluctuations, the school committee may adjust openings available.
Okay, does everyone understand the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, and all those opposed? That's two opposed, and I'm, there's no abstentions, right? Okay, so the motion passes? Good note. Okay. And our next agenda item is the Foundation Budget Review Commission. This has been in the, on the agenda two times before. At our last meeting, the materials were accidentally left out of the packet, and just to, so it was tabled until this meeting. The first item in your packet is a summary of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, summary of the recommendations for the foundation, from the Foundation Budget Review Commission. And on the third page, I think, is the most updated representation of how these recommendations are manifesting today in Boston on the Hill. And, and so, currently, there is a bill that is meant to get sent to the House of Representatives, and this here is a summary of what is included, and what this is put forward to join in with many, many other school districts across Massachusetts who are joining together to show a committed and, a committed force to our representatives to ensure that our schools are funded appropriately and that the foundation budget is adjusted to reflect, to better reflect the needs of our communities and the needs of our students and our school districts as a whole. Again, I'll point to the very first page, which is a simple summary of these recommendations. I would love a motion, Member Hollins.
I move the Greenfield School Committee to support the implementation of the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission, and so notify the MASC and our legislators.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Karen. Is there any further discussion on this? Yes, Member Hollins?
I just wanted to say that if this passes, it will update their cost estimation for special education students, ELL students, disadvantaged students, and better reflect the inflationary healthcare costs, so it's, would greatly be to our advantage.
Thank you, Member Hollins, for that concise summary. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. And we'll move right on to policies for second reading. We have two here, and I will yield the floor to Member Alexander to point us, or to walk us through what we have with JLD and JLDE.
Okay, in your packet tonight, I have policy, JLDE Guidance Program. Tonight, you have the approved policy that is in your packet tonight to give you a complete picture of the changes with the policy that's up for vote. I also have the original, current version of Policy JLDE Guidance Program, so you do have in front of you the actual language, which we didn't have for you last month. You can look through those, and this will also give you, fill you in on what the changes are for the Student Services Program. I will go ahead and read the proposed policy. This is the second reading, so tonight we get to discuss this a little further. Policy JLD-d-E, Student Services Program. Student Services Counselors and other personnel shall represent to the students a broad spectrum of education and career opportunities. Race, gender identity, color, sex, national origin, disability, homelessness, sexual orientation, and religion shall not be considered as limiting factors in career determination. Race, color, sex, national origin, sexual orientation, and religion shall not be considered as limiting factors. I just read that, sorry.
So it's one of those, one of those is striking.
What we had to do is we had to basically-
Which one is eliminated? The second one?
No, the second one. The, the font that is italicized, underlined, that is the recommended corrections to it. And then if this is, when this is approved, when it's being sent forward, it is changed to reflect the rest of the font. I do apologize not to explain that part. Career Day programs and other occupational information shall include representatives of both sexes and of minority group members in a broad variety of occupational roles. Schools shall not permit materials, including pictorial representations, to be used to recruit students for employment, including training, that contain a preference of individuals of particular race, gender identity, color, sex, national origin, disability, homelessness, sexual orientation, and religion. No material or tests shall be employed for guidance purposes which discriminate and/or limit choices on the basis of race, gender, identity, color, sex, national origin, disability, homelessness, sexual orientation, and religion. And basically, what we are, what you have today is, is these were recommendations presented by our Director of Pupil Services, based on guidances that is needed for us to be in compliance with the state of Massachusetts. So, and that is Policy JLD-d-E.
Member Alexander, I just want to clarify the striking of the sentences. So I'm hearing you say that in Paragraph One, we are striking the last sentence.
That is correct.
And in Paragraph Two, we are striking-
The sentence-
-just after the word, the underlined word, religion.
Correct.
It says, race, color, sex, religion, sexual orientation, or national origin, period, we're striking that section of the sentence.
Correct.
And the following sentence remains stet.
Correct.
And then in Paragraph Three, we are striking the last sentence fragment.
Correct.
Thank you. Member Hollins?
I just have a question. This is about careers, guiding students around careers, and it's saying that we, we will give a broad spectrum to everyone about their career opportunities, and if we have Career Day programs, we're going to make sure we are not limiting, and that none of the materials or the tests we use on what occupational preference will be discriminatory or lower expectations based on race or color. I think it needs to be not named Student Services Program, because it's not a Student Services Program, this is about career education programs. And I don't understand why we would name it something else, because Student Services Programs is a huge thing. It's all kinds of services, psychological, social work, da-da-da-da. And this policy is strictly about career education, so I think it should be named Career Education. That's what it's about.
Thank you, Member Hollins. You did highlight an inconsistency, which is that I'm seeing in JLDE, in the original policy, it was Guidance Program, in JLD, it's State's Guidance Program, and we've changed it to Student, Student Services Program. Our Director of Pupil Services is here today, I don't know, Diane, if you're interested in commenting on that, I don't recall this part of the conversation. Yes, if you don't mind, that'd be great.
Hello, everyone.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Ma'am. Yes, I think this, I think the language was changed to be, I think there was a recommendation around the language being changed, I'm not sure that I was a participant in all of the policy subcommittee meetings that this topic was raised. I do know that the term Student Services Program is, is consistent with how other districts, not all districts, I think it, I think the two terms are both used. So if there's a strong opinion of the committee to sort of retain guidance for clarity's sake, if Member Hollins is concerned in terms of that, or other members of the community, this topic came to the committee originally because there was some outdated language in our policy. Specifically, we were cited by the state, if I'm recalling off the top of my head, that we did not have homelessness and gender identity as protected classes in our policy. And so, we needed to add those, and I think there is a feeling of looking at guidance to be more, more general. But that's, again, I think it's, it certainly could be reflected as a guidance program policy.
Thank you, Director. I saw Mayor Martin's hand first.
In addition, it looks like we've changed the title of the office from Guidance to Student Services Counselors. So is there, I ask, is there a legal job description for Guidance Counselor, and is there a different one for Student Service Counselor, which would, would make sense that way, so you'd be opening up a different type of hiring process?
Thank you, Mayor Martin, that's a good question. It sounds to me, well, Member Hollins, did you want to?
Well, I think the answer is yes. To me, the title of the policy has to be what's in the policy. Paragraph One is about career opportunities. Paragraph Two is about- Paragraph two is about career opportunities. And paragraph three is about career choices. And the title of the policy should be Career Education. Guidance Counselors and Other Personnel, which means all the other people in the school district, every personnel, should make sure they do not limit students' career choices. I just don't understand the title. It's not the Student Services Program. It's about career education.
Thank you, Member Hollins. My recommendation at this time is actually to send this back to Subcommittee, trying to keep us moving this evening. And it sounds like there are a couple of really great questions that have come to the table tonight. As well, we can bring a clean copy forward for our next meeting. How does that sit with everyone?
I'd like to vote it. Because there's, I don't see any need for wording changes, it's just the title. I don't know.
And...
The wording changes were around the nondiscrimination, and I, I could move to vote it with a different title. Anyway, it doesn't matter, but...
And is there, I mean, I heard a concern related to Student Services Counselors versus Guidance Counselors, and that's a real legal concern that I think that we should consider.
I would move, I would move that we, that we amend second reading of JLD-E to replace Student Services Counselors, or rather, to Student Services with Guidance, and change the title of the proposed policy, Student Services Program, to Guidance Program.
Is there a second? A second from Member Alexander. Yes, Member Hollins?
Would you accept Guidance Program-Careers? Because we have a policy called Guidance Program. So we'd need a slightly different title.
Yes, I would.
Thank you.
Career Education?
Careers or Career Education? I said Careers dash Careers or Career Education, fine.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to change the title of the document to Guidance Programs...
Dash Careers.
Dash Careers. And change the first three word, two words to, from Student Services to Guidance Counselors? Is that accurate?
Yes, that is.
Thank you. Director Ellis, this, if I recall correctly, came to our attention from you in order to address the language to be inclusive. Do you feel that this is something that we are okay to vote on with this change to the language tonight? Or do you have a recommendation?
I do believe that with the proposed language that the committee is recommending, it meets the requirements of DESI. I think that there, perhaps the confusion with the title change is, and based on the fact that not all districts recognize. So if you look at a policy, I think that we're trying to be inclusive, trying to be inclusive because there are other, you know, Guidance Counselors and other personnel. So teachers, school adjustment counselors, school social workers, there could be a job coach or a life skills program that could influence. And, and so I think having the language "other personnel" allows that inclusiveness to remain in place. And I think the title change allows us to move forward in a way that I think meets our requirements and allows agreement with the committee on the policy. So I would be in support of that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Is everyone clear on the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? I'm seeing noes. Great, that is unanimous. Thank you, thank you very much. And we will move right along to, we just have a couple of smaller items. The, I have on here review and discussion of meeting times for Subcommittee. This came up kind of on the sidelines, and there was some interest in discussing Subcommittee meeting times specifically to ensure that we are able to have members of the public that can come to our Subcommittee meetings as well as meet the needs of our Subcommittee members. So something that I consider to be, you know, part of what we are doing is balancing our needs as a group and balancing the needs of the community. And so I committed to bring this to the table this evening. But I don't necessarily have any recommendation for us at this time. And I know that the Superintendent really did, does want to weigh in on this. And she actually requested to delay this discussion item until July, and I felt committed to keeping it here for this month because I committed to that. So at this time, I think it's appropriate to kind of informally open the floor to any motions or any kind of discussion related to Subcommittee meeting times. Would anyone like to comment on this?
I'd make a motion.
Sure, Member Hollins.
I'd make a motion that would say, in order to complete its assignment, each Subcommittee will set at least one fixed meeting when a quorum can be available.
As in a regular meeting time?
At least one that's set. I, I think it's important public can come into a meeting, but I think the most important thing, because you assign people to be on the Subcommittee, is that the committee can find a time when it can do its work. I think that's the most important thing, is that we get the work done we're assigned to do for the school committee. And so I think each committee should have one time, because there may be more times, like something come up in budget needing to be three times in a month, but I think you should have one meeting when you can get a quorum.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, I'm, sure, Mayor Martin, second.
I agree with you.
I agree with having a fixed meeting so that you can pre-schedule with your calendar. And I also see the need for special meetings on occasion. But when special meetings become regular meetings, there would be more than one special meeting in a row, then I think it's, it's overused. So my concern is I've, as I've communicated with the Chair, is that we had a number of special meetings lately, and we have a regular meeting. So if we have business that's so urgent that it has to be done on a special basis over a period of a month, we could have done it at the regular meeting. Like everyone, you're busy, you have a job, you have things to do. I think there's only going to be, it's very difficult to get everybody in the same box at the same time. So I, I think it's difficult. So the Chairs have to decide when the meetings are and try to do the best they can, and then that's the meeting. And that's music.
Is that our timer, Member Ekstrom? Thank you, Mayor Martin. Any other comments on this?
I guess I have a question.
Yes.
It did, we did have quite a few special meetings, but some of them were more like development, development, professional development meetings, correct? Like the Superintendent, learning about how to do Superintendent Evaluation. That was technically a special meeting, but it was a professional development. Or there were some that we had no choice but had to get done, meetings about the Business Manager. So I understand that it is frustrating when we have so many special meetings, but I guess I don't, I don't know maybe the definition between a special meeting and a regular meeting, if I'm not understanding that exactly correctly? Because I, it was difficult, but I was able to make it work, so I'm not sure what the exact complaint is, I guess. I would like clarification.
Thanks, Member Karen. I mean, you're right, we did have a handful of special meetings, and my understanding of a special meeting versus a regular meeting is that anything that's not a regular meeting is categorized as a special meeting. And there was the Calendar Agenda Workshop that was scheduled in advance, about four to, four to six weeks in advance. And then there were some other meetings along the way, including interviewing a Business Manager Candidate and other meetings that were scheduled. And I, I did schedule them because I felt there was a need to schedule them outside of the regular meeting. But I hear the input, and I think that we're all in agreement that we're not interested in necessarily attending more meetings than we have to.
Is this about Subcommittee's?
Thank you, thank you, Member Hollins. That is correct. This was, the agenda item is specifically to Subcommittee's. But let's bring it back around to the motion that's on the table. My only commentary on the motion on the table is that I believe that the majority of the Subcommittees have set regular meeting times, and that the Budget Subcommittee is in the process of doing that, and I support that. And I think that that will be very helpful for everyone in scheduling their calendars. And I have no problem in supporting the motion to have regularly scheduled meetings at the Subcommittee level. Susan, could you repeat that motion for us?
In order to complete its assignment, each Subcommittee will set at least one fixed meeting when a quorum can be available.
Thank you. Is there any further's? Yes, Member Alexander?
Well, I'm sitting there looking at the last couple of months, and it seems that we're pretty much there already. We've already got established third, you know, established which week which Subcommittee is going to meet, and the actual time and day during that week. So we're pretty much there now. It's just that right now, I think a lot of the stress is, our meetings are during business hours to where we can have input from the Central Office staff on the issues that we're talking about. But I believe we're there now with our normal rhythm and routine. It's just what day and what time we can get a quorum.
Thank you, Member Alexander. And just to clarify, Member Hollins, in your motion, did you intend for the motion to reference one regularly scheduled meeting per month?
No, because there may be a committee that doesn't need to meet that often, but there should be at least once that's, no, I didn't want to make it to a month.
One a year?
Okay.
It could be if you want it. I don't mind if someone wants to adjust it.
Okay, well, I am in agreement with Member Alexander that this is essentially already happening, and then there is conversation to have a regularly scheduled monthly Budget Subcommittee meeting. And I would support the motion if it did include, you know, once a month. Otherwise, I think quite possibly it's not...
I'm okay with it.
Pardon?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, okay, so then, Member Karen?
I am, I'm totally on board with the motion.
Okay.
I feel like we may need to have this conversation again when we have the Superintendent, because I think that the times part was an important part of this conversation, and I don't want to have it without almost all of us here.
That's a good point. So are we comfortable voting on this motion right now?
No.
No, are you moving to table?
Yeah, I'll move to table.
Okay, there's a motion to table. Can I do that in the middle of a motion?
Why would, can I ask why? If it didn't say when to meet, and it didn't exclude talking to the Superintendent?
Sure. Is there a second on the motion to table?
Second.
Okay, second from Member Ekstrom, okay. Did you want to speak to your motion, Member Ward?
Yeah, it's, this is, in my opinion, a minor issue that we can wait on having our Superintendent here to vote.
Okay, so the motion is to table discussion on, review and discussion on the meeting times for Subcommittee's table until July. All those in favor of tabling the discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone against? Member Hollins against? Were you an aye?
I don't.
Okay, so motion passes to table. When I guess, does that mean the other motion essentially is just tabled? All right, well, there we go, moving on to F. So the revised Superintendent Evaluation Date, so at our last full Committee meeting, which was, also included the workshop with the Calendar Agenda, there was a, a motion, we voted to postpone the Superintendent Evaluation Date until July, and I believe the Subcommittee responsible for the bulk of the Superintendent Evaluation has some input related to a revised date?
Okay, the adjusted Superintendent Evaluation Timeline, this is a recommendation from the Personnel Subcommittee. Documents from the Superintendent will be made available to Community, or Committee Members on no later than 1,200 hours, nine July 2018, at the Central Office. This part will also probably be worked out to where they can facilitate some of the stuff being chopped out.
What day was that?
Huh?
What day? July 9th, thank you.
Nine July, 1,200, did I?
Heard.
I keep forgetting, y'all are not in the Army.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure I got July 9th.
Okay, now, from nine July is when this, each Committee Member will have the packet from the Superintendent to make their individual evaluation comments. Documents are due from each Sub, or each Committee Member is going to be due to the Central Office on the 16th of July at 12 o'clock. This is where you get your documents in. Committee Member Ekstrom is continuing to volunteer to collate all of our documents to form one evaluation, and her deadline to have it back to the Central Office will be on the 23rd of July at 1,200 hours. Right now, we're proposing to the Chair that we establish a special meeting for the official evaluation of the Superintendent, to be 48 hours after that on the 25th of July. And as in the past, it's usually a meeting all to itself.
The 25th is the suggestion for the final, for the Superintendent Evaluation Meeting? Did you all set a time for that? Is that after, or is that yet to be determined?
I'm calling for the meeting.
Okay, can I get a show of hands, are folks available on the 25th, in the evening of Wednesday, the 25th of July? Mayor Martin?
I think, my understanding of food reimbursement is that the meeting must last at least three hours, so...
Come on, I'll just pay, I'll just buy you some food.
We're tired.
It'll be in the evening.
Yep.
They haven't set a time, probably six.
I think I do.
Are you a go? Okay, so let's have a motion, be formal about this. Can we have a motion to move the Superintendent Evaluation to July 25th?
So moved.
Katie Karen moves. Yes, time to be determined. Is there a second? Double seconds over here. Great. Any further discussion? Member Hollins?
This was at the Superintendent's request. Is it important to note that?
If you'd like to note it, sure. Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all those, yes?
Seven days back to back here. So when we get to your documents on the 9th, on the 16th, the responses from the Subcommittee members back to Central Office. And then, what Susan want to do with that?
I am on file with responses, and getting them back to Central Office.
Yes, Member Hollins?
Chairman, my recollection is the only time this has been done, the Chairperson has collated the responses. And I'm only mentioning that because if something comes up where there might be a need for attorney clarification, how do I handle this, how do I handle that? It would be the Chairperson that has the contact with the attorney. I'm sure anyone could do it, but should it be the Chairperson who actually handles the responses?
This was discussed at the meeting when we, yeah, Member Alexander, if you want to comment on it?
Uh, yeah, I remember that. Yeah, I remember that when we identified Committee Member Ekstrom as being the person to collate. She has vast experiences of actually doing this type of academic work, putting together stuff for evaluations and reviews. So she came with a very strong background. The correction is, is if she gets a hold of something that she needs help, then she does have her Chair, and the Chair can get back with the attorney and have the attorney contact directly and just probably in the same amount of, you know, a little bit past time.
I mean, that works for me, if it works for everyone else. Are you comfortable with that, Member Hollins? Okay. Are we ready to vote? Looking like yes, okay. All those in favor of moving the evaluation date to July 25th? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Mayor Martin, what is your, aye? Okay, so that is unanimous. Thank you. And, okay, so the last two things kind of go together. And this could be big conversation, or it could be kind of smaller conversation at this time. To start with G, this discussion on shared services. There's been considerable interest by Committee members and the Superintendent to have further discussion, deeper discussion, dive into how we can share services either with neighboring districts, or with neighboring organizations, or perhaps individuals. It's kind of a limitless potential there. At the same time, jumping to H, I have here the status of the Goals and Strategic Plans Subcommittee. This is a Subcommittee that was voted in, in the Goals and the Governance Goals that Member Hollins referenced earlier today. We voted those goals in in December, and part of that was to have develop a Subcommittee that would meet in a short period of time to review the goals and priorities of the School Committee, and to put forward a recommendation to the full body related to the goals for the district in this coming year and potentially into a slightly longer period of time. And so that Subcommittee has not yet met, and for good reason. But after the calendar meeting, we got to get a little clearer on what Committee, School Committee member interests were, School Committee priorities, but we didn't get quite there. So I think that now may be the time to actually call upon this Subcommittee to pick up some of the work that has been done and some of the interest that's been discovered through conversation with interest in agenda items and interest that was expressed at the calendar Subcommittee, priorities and sort of overall looking at what we would like to set as goals for the district. I know that Member Hollins has a real interest in the overall topic of goals and setting priorities. Myself, I do too. I think that there are others that have expressed interest. So, looking at the time, we do still also have an executive session. It's 8:53. I think that these two items are really important, and I actually think that, I'm going to bounce back to G again with the discussion on shared services. An option for this, I think, is to table until the next meeting. It could be also to potentially direct the Superintendent to give us a preliminary kind of review or plan, or what she thinks may be a good strategy for entering into a conversation about shared services. Another way to explore this is to pass it on to the Goals Subcommittee as a priority for the full committee, because it seems to be a priority, because it comes up again and again. I'm seeing some head nodding here, so I think that might be a good option for that. So, given the time, I don't want to cut this topic short, but at the same time, if there is significant interest in passing this topic to the Goals Subcommittee, I'm seeing some yeses, perhaps we should entertain a motion to not only get the Goals Subcommittee started, up and running, but also to direct that Subcommittee to prioritize a discussion on shared services. Does that sound? So that was a little bit sloppy language for a motion, but is... Yes, Member Hollins?
Well, I think we can make this something that's easy to do, because in Policy ADA, there's a voted mission and there's a voted for goals. And the third one, the third broad goal is create active parent and community partnerships. So if you just wanted to, I don't know who's on the Subcommittee, but if we didn't reinvent the wheel, we just work with our policy, that is a goal. And it's a question of, okay, this year, what are we going to do to meet that goal? So we already have pretty good goals.
So it's already there.
Yeah.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Yes, Member Alexander?
Okay, real quick, just to advise everybody, the actual district goals is on the agenda for the Personnel Subcommittee for this month and next month, with the target date of having the goals ready before we start school this year. It does make a really good sense to activate, and it is a special Subcommittee, or a special Committee to, and it was called Strategic Planning Goals Advisory Committee. And according to my notes, it was, Susan Ekstrom is the Chair of it, Cameron Ward and myself are the participants. If we can work together and come together, we possibly can knock out multiple tasks with more voices and be more accurate.
I just want to clarify, with the Personnel Subcommittee, I believe that you meant to say the Superintendent goals for next year? Okay, thank you. Okay, so.
Just one question on the shared services. We're talking about multi-districts shared services, not just within the city of Greenfield, right?
Yes, I think, Mayor Martin, that it could be quite expansive. It could be shared services with other districts, other organizations, any number of things. I think the intent is really to have a really big conversation about it. Member Hollins?
Would you like a motion?
Sure.
I move the Chairperson establish a special Subcommittee to address proposed School Committee goals and complete the work by the end of July.
Thank you, Member Hollins. The Subcommittee has actually already been formed. It was formed at the beginning of the year, and Dawn Alexander is correct that the Chairperson is Member Ekstrom, and Members Alexander and Member Ward are on this Subcommittee. So unless there, I believe that we should move forward with that configuration, unless for some reason the members of that Subcommittee are not interested in continuing with that assignment. Member Ward. Member Hollins?
I think it's really important we have this completed before we embark on Superintendent goals. You have to know from the governing body, where do you want to be in a couple of years? And then ask the Superintendent how you're going to help us do that. So I don't think this should be like a year-long thing. I really think we need to meet and get that over with and, not get it over with, but to get that accomplished expediently.
Thank you, Member Hollins. I think there is agreement to move quickly with that particular Subcommittee. It was never intended to be a long-term Subcommittee. It was always intended to be a short-term Subcommittee to advise the full committee on this particular topic. So you did put forward a motion, Member Hollins. Did you want to revise or repeat your motion?
Well, I'm just confused, because you started the conversation by saying that I had a keen interest in this and you had a keen interest in this, and so I made a motion to see if you could get a Special Committee to act on this by the end of July. But then you said there is a Committee, but then I got confused, saying maybe that Committee was looking at Superintendent goals. I'm just confused what you're doing.
No, I was clarifying with Member Alexander, because when he was reporting out on the Personnel Subcommittee that sets the Superintendent goals, I heard him say district goals. And so I just wanted to clarify that he meant to say Superintendent goals for the Personnel Subcommittee. And the, so that, that's why I brought that up, specific to his commentary just moments ago. So just to clarify, I'll just take it back just a minute, we're getting.
So if there's a Subcommittee, there isn't a need for Subcommittee, and I withdraw the motion.
Okay. And so is there a motion to initiate the goals? Could you give me the correct title?
I'll redo the motion.
Strategic Planning.
Strategic Planning and Goals Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Member Alexander, to review and advise the Committee by August?
Not if you want to have Superintendent goals following it up, I think.
Well, by our August meeting, because even if I get it July, are you saying by July 1? I mean, that's.
I don't think that's an attainable goal.
So that would be our first August meeting.
Right, by the first August, the meeting, the regular meeting in August. Okay. Are you moving that?
So moved.
I am moving that.
Thank you, team. I appreciate all of you. Is there a second? All right, second by Member Alexander. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Is there any new business to attend to before we move into executive session?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes, three, three issues. Could we have from the Policy Committee, the policies related to the reporting to the School Committee of new employees, retirees and administrators? There's a policy for that. Number two, the, there's a policy for school rental revenue. Has to do with the Mass General Law, Section 22, I believe it is. And we've had an increase of 64% in school rental revenue. Like to have that reviewed and see how it'll fit into my next, number three, request for the Agenda and the next meeting, to see how that is coming along and our compliance with Section 22 for the school rental revenue. Number three is to have the July 1 rollover accounts. We have presented, we've been presented tonight with the balance sheet from June 6. It's showing $2.4 million rolled over into the next year in a number of different accounts. I'd like to know exactly what it is at the beginning of July 1, which is the new fiscal year, so we can track those funds over the period of the year quarterly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. Member Hollins?
I also had an issue or a topic related to our financial report. At one of our recent meetings, we had a discussion about revolving funds, and we voted specifically how we would have a revolving fund report. The guidelines of what we wanted in each column was repeated four or five times. I repeated it. I think the Chair repeated it. I think Susan Farber repeated it. I think the Superintendent repeated it. I even think someone from the Business Consulting Group repeated it. And it was really important that we identify the money received and spent by year, because some of the funds, which is a big issue for us, have to be spent within a time limit. And in our report that we received tonight, it's not what we voted.
Because you're requesting a review of.
I'm requesting that we get the revolving fund reports the way we voted it.
Okay.
Because we didn't.
Yep.
And I had one other item, it's new business maybe to bring up sometime, and that is the role of the Budget Subcommittee. I think the, we haven't finalized the role of Committees, but when I think about it, I think the Budget Sub, the School Committee should consider having the Budget Subcommittee review financial reports and warrants. So there's a consistent body that's looking at money that's spent and money that's received and can report out. I think it would save time, but it seems like if there's a Budget Committee, they should be on top of even how we're spending millions of dollars and.
My recommendation for that is for the Budget Subcommittee to review and put forward a recommendation to do that, to make that change in practice. Unless there's any opposition, I think we should refer this topic just straight to the Budget Subcommittee for y'all to review.
Yes.
Okay, and I know that Member Ward isn't here, but we can remind him and ensure that everyone agreed that that's what we wanted to do tonight. Thank you, Member Hollins. Yes.
Mayor Martin, could you read back that first policy?
Okay. The first policy deals with the reporting by the Superintendent of new employees, retirees, retirements and administrators.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And Member Alexander, did you want to address the GCTV option?
Yes, okay. Real quick, we're coming into the balmy, balmy days of summer. I would like to move that we temporarily hold our full committee meetings back to our old location at GCTV, mainly because the space is air conditioned.
Uh, is it right now?
Oh, is it?
How about that? I move that we temporarily move for the months of July and August to conduct our full committee meeting at the Greenfield Community Television, mainly the purposes that it's going to get really hot and muggy in here, and it's, the air conditioning works. That's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second on that? Second by Member Ekstrom. Any discussion?
Except that, except that the reason we moved here was because it was a better access. And there are some disadvantages with the third floor of GCTV. So are we, are we going to abandon that reason and go there? How about the Community Center?
This is only a temporary question, because when myself and Philippe got here at 4:00 this afternoon, this room was really, really hot and balmy. We've been having the windows open. And as we progress into the summer, it's not going to get any easier in the evening. So I'm just mainly looking at comfort and our ability to focus.
We've had that issue in the wintertime when there's no heat because of the air exchange. So the way we were able to rectify that situation was to readjust the time on the computer so that the heat came on sooner before our meetings, particularly the Town Council meetings. So maybe we can adjust the computer again and program the air conditioning to come on an hour before the School Committee's here. George Vandelander at Central Maintenance.
Is there air conditioning in here? I'm not sure that there is. I think that there is in the auditorium, but not in the entire building. I could be, I could be wrong.
Okay.
Is the Community Center an option?
In, nearly, and by the end of July it might be. But, okay.
I haven't been in the Community Center, but I do know that on Wednesday nights at 5:30, they have many activities going on, so I don't know. I don't know that they'll be available when we want them to be available. I'm comfortable in the other places. No two ways out, there's no windows.
Well, any other location, I feel that we also need to be, make sure that GCTV can support us. So that was, like I said, they're already there. The mics are already plugged in right now. So that was just my thought.
Okay.
I can support that idea.
So there is a motion on the table to move our July and August meetings to the GCTV studio on Main Street. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of that summer change to our meeting location? Okay, so I'm seeing, Mayor Martin, you were a yes, is that right? Okay, any no's? And any abstentions? Susan, what is your vote? What is your vote? What is, what is your vote?
I'll go along with everyone.
Are you voting a yes? Okay. So, that motion passes. And Mayor Martin, I really appreciate you bringing up the point about access, and I agree with you, and, and I know that Member Ward has been interested in having meetings in the Greenfield High School library. I'll poke around and see what information I can find in terms of a more comfortable solution, just in general. Thank you, everyone. Are there any new agenda item requests? Okay, seeing none. I recommend that we move to enter into executive session and take a three-minute recess, and then move into executive session. Is there a motion? All right, and this is for the reason of Mass General Law, C-30A, 21, Section 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. There is a possibility that we will return for a vote. That is unclear.
Second, the motion.
Okay. Possibility. There was a second from Member Hollins? Roll call, please.
Committee Member Exstrom?
Yes.
Committee Member Hollins?
Yes.
Committee Member Karen?
Yes.
Committee Member Ward is not present. Mayor Martin? Committee Member Nunes?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay. So, we are in executive session. Let's convene in the back room in a couple of minutes.
Thank you for watching GCTV's production of the Greenfield School Committee Meeting from June 13, 2018. You can catch the show online on gctv.org. All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23-Fisk Ave. Call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.